Students and administration and teachers. Our first recipient is Louis Ryan II. Louis is recognized for qualifying for district choir. Dalton is recognized for qualifying for district choir. Our next recipient is Marlene Jackson. Marlene went above and beyond to coordinate the A-plus program here at our school. She also called state representatives to share her concerns with students being excluded from A-plus because of the algebra EOC in the midst of the pandemic. And she was helped, she helped get that resolved for our students. Avery is recognized for achieving 1,000 kills in volleyball. Phoenix Johnson is our next recipient. Phoenix is recognized for qualifying for state Special Olympics. Our next recipient is William Thorne. William is qualifying for state Special Olympics. Kay Leeper. Kay is a teacher here in our district. Kay is recognized for continuing to be a vision of excellence in the Cameron Island School District by having your steampunk mosaics article published in the November 2021 issue of the School Arts Magazine. Joy Durbin. Joy is recognized for earning her specialist degree in educational leadership. Spencer Pratt. Spencer is recognized for qualifying for district choir. Dayton Wilson. Dayton is recognized for qualifying for district choir. Dalton Stubblebean. Dalton is recognized for qualifying for state Special Olympics. Ms. Mariah Anderson. Mariah is recognized for qualifying for district choir. Allison Brown. Allison is recognized for qualifying for district choir. John Rockhold. John is recognized, Mr. Rockhold, recognized for earning his specialist degree in educational leadership. Ms. Janavick. We recognize her again for earning her specialist degree in curriculum and instruction. Mr. Noah Jagers. Noah is recognized for qualifying for district choir. And Mr. Justin Simpson is recognized for earning his master's degree in educational leadership. On behalf of the entire school board, we want to thank everybody that was here tonight and thank you for representing us as Dragons and putting work, putting forth all that work and effort to earn those awards. So, thank you. The school board now is going to go into closed session, so we're going to move across the hallway and go into closed session after closed session. We will, we will reopen back up for open session. So you're welcome to stick around if you want to come back over there or otherwise we can be dismissed. So, thank you.
We are moving along, starting to pick up some ground that we had lost a little bit earlier, so I feel good about that. We obviously have our committee meetings every couple of weeks, but we're, we're moving along as far as the theater is going. We've put in a kind of connecting the walls between the lower roof and the upper roof. Now on the auditorium section, really about the one thing on roofing, which is kind of starting to cause a little slight delay is that we're having problems, whether it be with the chain or supply chain or just the people that are making it. But roof insulation right now is really the one thing kind of slightly holding us back is that part. But the theater is moving along just like it should. They started vent work and putting all the ductwork and all that stuff in there. We moved into the weight room. This will be what, the third week, I think, we're in there. They've already demolished the old weight room and already had sheet rock on the walls and the wires for all drop ceiling and all those different pieces. So I'd say by early November, we might be close to getting that room back and then we'll have all of the English rooms all under kind of one roof and, and all right by each other. And then the north wing, science rooms have kind of been, we've done everything we can do in the science rooms. One thing left would be the sheet rock, but they're right now wanting to see if we can get our glasswork in for the windows. And then they'd really like to be able to do the installation of the roof first because that, that was slated to be done as part of the project. Before they do it, they might go ahead once they get the windows and go ahead and get the sheet rock. And then the north wing that we demolished and pretty much rebuilt is all steel works done, all the decking's up there. And now it must be, I think, as soon as they finish the upper and lower roof on the auditorium, they'll be moving over there to start building the walls. So, moving along, we've got three-fourths of the parking lot we had last year back. So, we got a few more kids parked in the parking lot. So, the bonus to that is they all show up at sevens, they can get a parking spot. They have no problem getting here early when they want to. But we are, we are picking up steam again. That's good, especially going into winter. We're trying to get as much as they can enclosed before winter is upon us. That's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you. Administrative reports. Dr. Mefron.
Just a couple of things to highlight. I had mentioned that we have been practicing some bus evacuation drills. Kudos for our high school students. I was very impressed with them. Several of them just kind of stepped in and helped with the little ones, which can be very helpful in those situations. We will actually do a special education evacuation drill on those special education buses that will be held this Wednesday. And then we have plans to do a reverse evacuation drill, which means we will load the students at Parkview, travel to CIS, and then pretend that there's weather-related or some type of situation where we will need to get those students off and get them into a building to take shelter for a weather-related situation or any type of situation. And so we are actually going to practice that November 3rd. That'll be the first reverse evacuation that we do. And so we're kind of anxious to see how that goes. Last year maybe, there was a situation where there was some weather that forced a bus to come back to CIS. And so next time we'll be prepared for that. I mentioned the district data walkthrough or walkthrough data. The walkthrough data, yes, is yielding an increase in the number of teachers utilizing technology. I like to think that that is due to the creation of that new position, the instructional technology coach, Ms. Lim. She is working with the teachers and so as I look at the reports from district-wide data, the principals are indicating a lot more of our teachers are utilizing the technology for their instruction. And then also students are actively engaged in hands-on learning. So that is a positive thing. I shared with you the NWEA results, those summary reports. We are continuing with those assessments. Those are benchmarks assessments, so they will be given in the fall, the winter, and then again in the spring. I shared with you the 1920, 2021, and 2122 results. We did anticipate some learning loss, but if you look at the kindergarten scores, for example, there in 1920, those students' baseline score or mean score was 139.6. If you move over to 2021, first grade students, that's the same group of students, those scores are 164.4. And then if in 2122, that would be your second grade class. So we are showing growth. We did have learning loss. We anticipated that. We take these reports, each building takes these reports, and then drills those down further with an instructional continuum that can identify and build it down to the exact standard. And so each building uses different reports, but overall, I think we were pleased with these scores. And so we have some documents to kind of guide our instruction to go back and kind of fill in some holes. I also included our initial government scores. Those are released on the 12th through, not through the DESI platform, but through the platform NextEra and WestStar, which is where we offer the assessment. Right now, DESI has not provided us with performance level descriptors, so what identifies what below basic is and what scores a student basic, proficient, and advanced. But they have provided us with those item analysis and I shared with the board last month what those item analysis reports are, so we can identify the standards, how well the students scored. And so I'm sure Mr. Jones has shared those with his teachers, but that will give us a great roadmap, I think, for instruction for the rest of the year. The ASVAB was also given to the juniors last Friday, but last year, due to virtual instruction, we had several students that as juniors did not come in and take the ASVAB. The Department of High School, Mr. Jones and Ms. Anderson have done a very good job of kind of getting those seniors back in. And so 28 seniors that did not take the ASVAB last year ended up taking it last Friday. And just some final information that I did not include in my board report. Of course, the 21 APR, that will not be provided. That data will be reported through the district report card, hopefully sometime in December. Keep in mind, nothing will be used for accountability purposes. MSIP-6, we're still in the, the process of de-inflammation for that or implementation of that. Next fall, the 2122 data will be released to districts, but it will be secured. So we will receive that information, it'll be based on MSIP-6, but that information will be secured and will not be released publicly. Then in the fall of '23, that APR will be released publicly using MSIP-5 Standards and Criteria. That will be released, as I mentioned, publicly, but then also MSIP-6 will be released to school districts only and that information will be secured. So kind of just to see how that's going to pan out. And then the fall '24, game on. It will be full implementation of MSIP-6. So right now, that's the projected timeline. I think there's still some conversations. The commissioner has created a committee. In fact, Dr. Shanks is on that committee and they're still trying to weigh some of the criteria for MSIP-6, but as long as everything goes as planned, that's the kind.
Questions or comments? Before we go to Mr. Jones, our peer, our peer, a bit casual, I apologize. I had my knee replaced last Thursday and so I'm kind of trying to be as comfortable as I can be. So if you can tolerate me, I'd appreciate it. Moving because it hurts. Mr. Jones, high school report.
One celebration, I guess, is that we, I mean, it's almost been over two weeks now. We made it through homecoming. That's always kind of a stressful time for administration, but we had more students at the dance than we've had since I've been here. We had 405 students attend the dance. I felt like the, you know, we had our StuCo kids, they did a good job of leading the, the community pep rally. It's the first time we've done that in a long time, I believe. So, you know, the skits were fun, the class competitions, I thought the kids really got into that. Had a little bit of rain, but everybody stayed and I think the junior class made $140 from the dunk tank dunking Mr. Anderson, myself, and Mr. Meyer. They paid a lot of money to dunk Mr. Meyer. So, anyway. I thought the homecoming parade was a big turnout. We did stuff a little bit different this year. The, the students that wanted to decorate the floats went over Friday morning on our half day and they spent three hours over the football field decorating. And I mean, they were really engaged and I thought the floats turned out really well. So, also like to shout out for Kennedy Roach and Haley Williams. They are down at the Columbia Country Club, competing in the state golf tournament today and tomorrow. And the volleyball team is the number one seed in districts, which will be hosting. And I believe they will play their game Saturday at 4:15. So if you can make it, I think there's probably a pretty good chance that we can move on there. So, and they're playing pretty well and I think they're 19 or 22 or 3. So they're having a real strong season. Football team won Friday night, which I think will almost ensure us a home district football game. So we're excited about that. And I think the opponent that we have, we, you know, we've already beat this year. So we're looking forward to, you know, continuing our season there. Our, our ag department hosted a farm safety day on last Friday for all the third and fourth graders at CIS. I went out there and, and you know, our kids were doing great with the little kids and they were asking great questions, stumping some of our high school kids. One of our kids at Thomas Robinson, he had one of his, he had a zero turn there and the kid's like, what would happen if the blade fell off while you were, you know, and it flung out? And he's like, uh. So then I had to ask, where are the muffler bearings? And he's like, are you, are you serious? I'm like, no, I'm not serious. It was fun. I thought the kids, you know, they did, they did a good job with the young ones and the little kids love it. So, and then we haven't been able to do this for a couple of years. We were able to take seven B juniors and seniors to Missouri Western for a college and career fair. You know, the counselors went over there with them and said the kids were super engaged with the, the college recruiters and got lots of information. So we were glad that we were able to do that for, for those students. So, and we're, we're working on this. It's not finalized yet, but something I'd like to point out is that two years ago, the, the high school hosted a trunk or treat. The weather was terrible. We moved it inside the high school and I think there were 2,000 people come through there. We're trying to put a trunk or treat together at the football field for Halloween. So we are looking for district organizations, not just high school organizations, but district organizations to host a trunk. And then we'll have our little biddies from the district come through from three to five on that Sunday.
Questions? The activities report is next. Any questions or comments related to that? Dr. Collins, Middle School.
So I wanted to highlight about our attendance information. So Mr. Fisher is starting to connect with our frequent flyers for students who are habitual in, in being absent. So he is providing additional support and meeting with families and with students for that. We have a couple of new celebrations. They're not all in the board report, but I did want to highlight all of our Rockstar Parking. I'm going to do my best to make sure I get all of the names in there each month, so that way you guys can see all of the teachers that are being honored each week throughout. We're doing two teachers a week. Some new information for you. A couple of people had stopped me, some had stopped me in the gym, some had just stopped me in the hallway and had mentioned the thank a teacher phase that had been going across Facebook and had asked if any of us had done anything like that. And I said, well, no, we hadn't at our school, so we started it. So I put it out there to any fall coach that wanted to do it and softball took me up on it. So our softball girls, I thought you'd appreciate knowing, I took a whole bunch of pictures and those are all on the CBMS Facebook page. If you haven't seen them, the teachers that were honored by our softball girls, there were a lot. We had Mrs. Janavick, Mrs. Wallace, Mrs. Arnt, Mrs. McKinley, Mrs. Lim, Mrs. Corley, Ms. Vitoulis, Mrs. Zubek, and Mrs. Barlow. So each teacher received a jersey and some of them wore it, some of them hung it on the wall, some of it hung it in the classroom or on the back of their chair. But the softball girls did go through and honor our teachers. Also wanted to share with you that we did the first ever math building-wide challenge. The morning announcements team had that up and they took a math challenge that our math trainer, Margaret Bongarder, had presented to the math teachers and they sent it out to the whole school and they had a week to go through and come up with the best answer. And they were due on Friday. We announced the winners today. I was anticipating one with a possible tie. We had four students that came up with the right answer. So we had four-way tie. So I had to go out and order more sweatshirts. So the prize was a Cameron Dragon sweatshirt and three tickets to get to any sporting event, three free tickets for the year. So, and then the last thing that I have that I'm excited to report on is I have been in communication with the animal shelter here in town and we have a family time that is focused on plants and animals. And so family time meets every other Monday. And today I went into the family time and they want to partner with the animal shelter. So I have been in communication with them, meaning the animal shelter, and the kids are going to come up with a little ditty for some of the animals. We're trying to figure out about locations and how we can get pictures of animals, if the shelter's going to send them to us or if they're going to bring the animals over and then the kids are going to take the pictures. But we're hoping to partner with them with some type of community, community, not necessarily event, because you know, my kids are minors and they can't really interact with stray animals. But anyways, I'm, I'm excited. It's very much in the very beginning stages, so hopefully we'll have more to share in the future.
Good. Questions? Mr. Durbin with the CIS.
Hello. We had Margaret Bongarder in district via Zoom a couple of weeks ago. She provided some math PD for our math team she met during their plan time. We delved into our map data. We looked at glows and grows from third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. Rachel Parky has done a nice job, our instructional coach. She has sorted our document by standard. So a third grade standard, a fourth grade standard, a fifth grade standard, they build on each other. So we've, we've aligned that vertically and we're going to use that for some vertical discussions on the morning of parent-teacher conferences. So looking forward to that. Just a couple of thank yous. I wanted to thank the ag department for putting on the ag safety day. That was, that was a good turnout. The weather was perfect that day. And then also want to give a big shout out to Mrs. Webb. October is bullying prevention month and she's done a lot of, you know, hands-on stuff with that between lessons. And then I've also included my board report, the video that our student ambassadors created. If you haven't watched that, I've, you know, please take the time to, to watch that. And then students, we did a stomp out bullying walk where they pledged five or 10 or 15 minutes of the recess and just, you know, made a pledge to, to not stand for bullying. I guess my last thank you would be to the central office staff. I guess a kudos to winning the homecoming challenge. Here we are three weeks later, two weeks later. People don't forget, so. Hats off. Yeah, let's move on. That was fun to thank you guys for.
In your assessment data, what does boy be a why?
Beginning of year, sorry. I should have clarified. Yeah.
I should have known that.
Yeah. Beginning of year, then you'll see moy, middle of year, then eiway.
All right. Any questions, comments? Mr. Durbin. Ms. Armstrong, elementary.
Thank you. At the beginning of the year, Dr. Robinson challenged us to begin to think more with the growth mindset and to think outside of the box. And I just wanted to share something that we're doing at Parkview. Thank you, Jimmy. With our Talent Ed program. Talent Ed is the program that we use to evaluate our teachers and it's kind of a burdensome process that teachers go through. We wanted to take that and turn it into a really positive thing. So with unanimous support from all of our grade level teams, we have been working as a team to set goals and work on our strategies and implement those into our, our daily process. So our teachers at Parkview chose indicators 9.3 and 1.1, which focus on cooperative partnerships in support of student learning and content knowledge and academic language, both of which are challenging indicators to pick for yourselves. The goals that we set are 100% of certified staff members and grade level teams will share best practice strategies for student achievement as evidenced through faculty share fairs and collaboration meetings. And the other goal was 100% of certified staff members will implement weekly use of best practices in ELA and math as evidenced by weekly grade level lesson plans, teacher walkthrough, observation documentation, and weekly collaboration agenda notes, all of which are huge goals. And it's turned out to be a wonderful process. It's really made it a deeper experience for all of us working together to set these goals. We talk about it every meeting, whether it's the weekly collaboration with me or it's the monthly meetings that they have with Rachel Parky and Felicia Lim, our instructional coaches. And the three of us are also having really great conversations about how the teachers are so focused and are using that, the strategies that we are working on to deepen their understanding and learning. And I'm just really proud of all the work that they're doing and I, I think that it contributes to another thing I had on here, which was just a little form I put out to teachers to tell me basically what their favorite drinks were, candy bars, things like that, so we could be recognizing the, the things that they do. There's a little line on there, what's your favorite part about working at Parkview? And out of the 45 forms that have been returned this far, almost every single form listed at least one, if not all, of the following reasons. The kids, of course, our family-like atmosphere and great culture and the great staff and kind people that we have. And I'm just really proud of all the work that our staff does, teachers, paras, everyone, custodians, cooks, we're all in it together for the students and it's, it's been a really great year so far and I wanted you to, to know that. Another thing I wanted to share was a thank you to Mary Crawford. One of the things that we looked at last year is just, you know, it was a rough year all the way around and what can we do to make things better at Parkview? And she really did a great job of listening to the things that we shared with her. And one of the things we did was to trans, I guess you would say, transition out of co-teaching and we now have resource rooms in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade for our students. And that has been a, a great change for us. We have a teacher that's dedicated for the special education needs at each grade level, which is really helping us better serve the, the variety of needs that we have in our building. She was also great to listen to our concerns about our preschool age groupings and we've done a, a great job of grouping kids by need as well as by age. And that's made a tremendous improvement for us. And we also brought back kindergarten speech screenings this year and we're able to identify a lot of students earlier than we have been in the last couple of years. So kudos to you, Mary, and thank you for your support. What'd you say?
Comments? Ms. Crawford, special education.
I have a couple of celebrations on here. Andy Brown has worked for our department for, I don't even know how many years, 17 years maybe. But with the changes in our speech and language implementer from DESI, Andy went back and got her special education process passed, which is Andy went back and got her special education practices passed, which is huge for us. So we get to keep her on staff next year with our special education team. So we're excited about that. And then special education, or I'm sorry, special Olympics bowling is underway. We started practices at the beginning of October and have a tournament October thirtieth. I just got the time today. They're bowling at eleven-thirty in Chila Coffee on that Saturday. So anybody that would like to, to watch our special Olympics group bowl, it is a, it's a great environment to be a part of. So one thing that Dr. Robinson had asked us to do this school year is talk about growth mindset. And one of the things that we have done, well, two things that we have done. One, obviously, is Princess, our dog, who was utilized today at the high school. We had two counselors reach out and thanked us for the use of Princess, which is great. And then the other one is communication devices. We've been using iPads with two different communication apps for our students to provide some consistency and give a voice to some of our students that are nonverbal. And we had a parent email us, oh, it was right after our last board meeting, that said, that her child said for the first time, "I love you so much," to her that weekend. And Angie can attest to this. When we got the email, I don't think anybody had a dry eye, because that's, that's a big thing for all of you parents to get to hear your child say that for the first time. So while it's hard work and it's, it's a lot for the teachers to take on using these communication apps, it's paying off. And so we're seeing it just in our walkthroughs. Our teachers are using them. Students are improving. We see it in our data that the teachers are collecting for their progress reports. But then when parents are reporting it, that's when you know that good things are happening. So kudos to the teachers for using that. And I know the administrators have been watching for that as they do walkthroughs and pushing that as well. So kudos to the staff for that.
That's the big stuff.
Thank you. Okay, we have the technology and maintenance reports. Any questions, comments from anyone on those data reports? Not in safe return to in-person and continuity of service plan, I think.
Yeah, as I stated, every month, or last month, we'll be doing this every month to meet our kind of thirty-day requirement. We're not recommending changes at this point in time. We're going to continue to keep the, the, the plan, I guess, is working. We haven't had to, I mean, just overall, we've had pretty low numbers in the district. I think we have a couple weeks there at the high school, but short of that, we've had, you know, well below what we thought we actually might have. So I'm just going to recommend that we go ahead and continue with the plan, and you'll see this on the agenda again next month.
Yeah, I'm personally, I'm very pleased with the numbers and, and the way the staff was managed. And our administrators, thank you for that. It's, I know that's a big job. Appreciate it. Okay, we have.
We need to get a vote on that.
Oh, we need a vote? Okay. Motion?
Move to continue.
Second.
Second, moved and seconded by Mary and Pam to approve the continuity of services plan discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, now we'll get to approval of resignation.
You don't have to.
Yeah. So Janie Gates has submitted a letter of resignation. Is there, is, is, would it be inappropriate to say shame on you? Janie will miss, you have been.
I don't miss being here.
You've been an asset to the district and, and your skill set and work with the district. Much appreciated, and it will be missed.
I enjoyed it very much, so.
Technically, last Friday was your last day. She agreed to come tonight to the board meeting as board secretary and take the minutes and pass that torch to the next person. So I would with regret entertain a motion to approve the resignation of Janie Gates. Moved by Doug.
Second.
Seconded by Pam. Discussion. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. No. Motion carries unanimously, regretfully. Okay. Personnel to hire. You have a list of folks in front of you that are recommended for hire.
Move to hire.
Actually, we need to add one to that. We do have Janie's replacement. So I'll, my mind just went blank. Kelly Walker, sorry, Kelly Walker, yes. My mind just went blank there for a second, so.
Stacy Walker.
I started running through. Yeah, I'm going to say it a lot, so. Yes, so Kelly Walker will be adding her. This afternoon, she, she accepted, the board so approves, so.
Okay, so the personnel recommended is Sandra Reno as food service part-time, Randy Cox as a para, Rihanna Raven.
Yes.
As a para. Rachel Refit, is that right, Refit? Para. Emily Williams as a para part-time, and Kelly Walker as a central office administrative assistant.
Yes.
Move to hire.
Moved by, by Mary, seconded by Jackie. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, that motion carries. All right, we have substitute to hire. Gosh, that's kind of small.
Wilson and Ash.
Kristy Hughes moved by Mary to hire, to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Doug. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, that motion carries. And then extra-duty coaching. There are, I think, three or four of those.
Yes.
Middle school track for Lindsay, court, middle school head coach for.
You see the head coach?
For track.
Track. Ty Pratt, assistant, middle school assistant wrestling. Adam Nelson, middle school, and varsity assistant girls basketball. And then we need to also approve.
For volunteer coaches.
Volunteer coaches, Jesse Pierce and Coleman Oxford. Motion?
Move.
Moved by Pam, seconded by Ann. Discussion. Favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. You read my mind. Okay, did we, you got anything else in that category?
No.
All right. Communications from our citizens, teachers, or students regarding items that may have been on our agenda this evening.
I have a communication about an item that was not on the agenda.
I'll, I'll be happy to discuss with you.
Okay, anything else? No one else? All right, board member comments. I do have a comment. Find it here. Yeah, so I received a letter from MSBA. Dear Board President Kercher, congratulations. Your school district has a certified school safety specialist. SRO Scott Meyer has recently completed the Basic School Safety Academy hosted by MSBA. So we'll recognize Scott in some fashion, I believe, and get him a certificate. There is a news release that we can give to Jimmy and forward that. But certainly, SOR, SRO Meyer has done a good job and deserves to be recognized for his efforts.
And it's done well, I heard.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I would just take a, oh, sorry.
I received a letter from MSBA. What MSBA it was. I don't know who it's from, but anyway, everyone has successfully completed the mandatory board refresher training. So we have been notified that all of the board have successfully done that. So thank you and congratulations to our board for that achievement. Okay, other board member comments.
I would just thank the, the school district and certainly the band boosters and anyone involved with March Fest. This last Saturday, it was a beautiful day, the most perfect day we've ever had at March Fest. And after two years away, there were a few, a few kinks, but it was a beautiful day. And that stadium was filled to the brim with kids and bands everywhere. And by the time the Bearcat marching band came out, it was a pretty, a pretty neat scene. So thank you to everybody who contributed and helped with that. And some of our own, our own staff, our superintendents, our principals, our teachers that volunteered to be there, and custodial staff, it was a great effort, so thank you.
I wish you guys could hear all the students that compliment our school when they're here from other districts. So everybody likes that drag. I just heard that frequently. They really like that drag, sit in the corner of the book. I, I want to thank Janie for your hard work. I also want to thank Dr. Robinson for working on this room, and it would be nice to help us down here, so thank you for that. And it was fun celebrating everybody over in auditoriums.
If there's no other business, the meeting is adjourned.